Regents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Northridge Baptist. Okay, not here. Roll call.
Sabers.
Here.
Goldammer.
Here.
Docher. McCardle.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Charts.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Okay, approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Anyone want to discuss any of this?
I don't necessarily want to remove anything. I just wanted to take a second to thank all of the city staff at the Corn Palace, public safety, and all of the volunteers that came in to make the Corn Palace Festival successful. I think there was a lot of things that we did really, really well, and so I just want to take a second to celebrate what I thought was a major win for Mitchell and a very successful event. So, thank you all for that help and support.
A motion by Mr. McCardle and a second by Mr. Sabers. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Dang, I wrote it on here twice. Roll call.
You're checking out.
Yeah, look, I wrote it really big.
Docher.
Hi.
McCardle.
Hi.
Barrington.
I think I'm going to stand Jay. If I'm just doing this right.
Bathke.
Aye.
Charts.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Okay, citizens input. If you need to address the mayor and members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda excluding personal items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Does anyone wish to address the council?
Most of you know where I live. I've reached out, sent some pictures to some of the members, the ones I couldn't send to, I don't have your phone number. So, I sent them out today, and I've heard through Mr. Goldammer that you're going to do something with Dry Run, cleaning it out, and the mayor responded back to me this morning also saying that they're looking at doing something on Dry Run. Mr. Goldammer told me while back on a phone call that you were looking at fall or spring next year. I would suggest do it in the fall because we don't know what winter's going to bring us, and we could get a lot of snow which would hold things up in the spring. And also know, and you know, that it's going to flood. I mean, there's no doubt about it. What I'm looking at is trying to keep it in that flood, you know, in between the bike path, so it doesn't come up into my backyard. So, that is my concern, you know, if you are going to clean it up, I would like to see it done in the fall instead of the spring. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? All right, we'll move to the next one. Mayor and council discussion items. So, the first thing we're going to do is have Brandon Manchester and staff come up here and talk about a major accomplishment they have done for the city. You guys haven't heard about it yet.
All right, thank you, everybody, for giving me some time to come up here and talk to you. The city has been recognized as a cardiac-ready community. We got the signs, and we got a couple of signs that we'll be hanging up around town. What does that mean? That means the city of Mitchell over the past years has been putting a... The city of Mitchell has been putting a lot of resources into the city to help save lives. There have been countless people saved by somebody doing CPR, using an AED right away before the ambulance can even get there. People are alive today because of those devices. This is a big accomplishment. Mitchell's the first city over 10,000 population that's getting this award or this recognition in the state of South Dakota. This is through the Department of Health and the American Heart Association. We've been working together with the United Way and the Rec Center and the Mitchell Fire Department to get this recognition. I'm going to get... The paper I'm passing around, kind of the first few paragraphs talk about what we had to meet, what we have to do to become a cardiac-ready community. The city has purchased over the years 27 AEDs. We have an AED in every public building the city owns. There's actually three AEDs in the Corn Palace. You got one North Concession Stand, one on the stage, and one in the armory. There's two in the ice arena. Waste Management has an AED, Water Department has an AED, Softball Diamonds have them, baseball fields, soccer fields. They're everywhere in town. Businesses are carrying AEDs. There are CPR classes being held the second Thursday of every month down at the fire station. There's a small fee, but it's a CPR recognition... CPR certification course, so we have been working over the past few years to make the city a cardiac-ready community, which is a great thanks to the council and the mayor over the years. I did some research. We have had a fireman teaching CPR in the community since 1974. Harvey Baldwin kind of started it back in the day. He was one of the first EMTs in the state. His EMT number was 45. So, he was in the second class ever offering an EMT class. So, we have had people in this community teaching forever, which is huge. So, when we got this application for cardiac-ready community, it was actually pretty easy because we already had most of the requirements. We had been doing everything already. And a big thank you to our council and our community because it is a huge investment. An AED is expensive. They are at retail cost $1,700 apiece, and they get replaced every 10 years, and the patches get replaced every two to four years with a battery. That's not cheap. And so, it's awesome that we have the people in our community that are willing to learn CPR and a council that has put AEDs throughout town. Like I said, we got 27, and then we have plans for the future. We are working with the United Way to get AED stickers put on... made with a QR code, and we're going to put them at all the doors and businesses want them. The business that have AEDs put the stickers on the doors of those businesses, so when they're walking in, people know there's an AED in this facility if something were to happen. They know the tools are there to help save a life. I can let Ashley talk real quick. She's Ashley Hobbs. She's from the United Way. We've partnered with them. They are actually designing the website, and I'll let Ashley talk about that real quick.
Thanks, Brandon. As you said, Ashley Hobbs from the Mitchell United Way. Yeah, I just basically just wanted to bring awareness to our community on, you know, the good work of our EMTs and fire department and what they're doing to save lives every single day. And so, this is an easy way. I mean, a lot of people just do not know where AEDs are located, and we're very fortunate to have them. And so, this is just an additional step to make the community aware. And so, as many of you know, like, my little guy, Declan, was saved by CPR, by his daycare provider, and so the AED is just another step in ensuring that our community is safe and able to act on at any given moment. So, I'm very fortunate to work with Brandon and Thomas on this project, and I think it's a great investment in our community. So, thank you.
And one thing, since I got the floor here, anybody can perform CPR. You do not need to be trained to do CPR. All you have to do is press hard and fast and center the chest and call 911 at a minimum. It's awesome that we have companies that let their employees take CPR classes so they're more comfortable when the time happens. Going back to the city, you guys let all your employees take CPR classes. All the city employees are first aid, CPR, and AED trained. We have classes every fall for half the employees, and the next year's the other half, and then the year after that, the first group has to go again because it's a two-year certification. So, they're constantly getting trained in first aid and CPR and AED usage. So, if you have a garbage man driving down and you see somebody laying next to this mower on the ground unresponsive, he can stop, get out, and call 911, get that help coming, and hopefully start doing CPR on him and try to save the lives. There have been people saved in Mitchell from our AEDs. At the Rec Center 13 years ago, the guy was working out, went unresponsive. They started CPR, used the AED, shocked him, and he was awake and talking before the ambulance got there, and they were there in less than two minutes. And he's still around working out all the time. Same thing at Twin City Fans. We got there in four to five minutes. He was awake and talking because they had CPR training, they had AEDs at Twin City Fans, and they saved that guy's life. He's still running around town today. Happens all the time. So, thank you for everything you have done. Going back to the Rec Center, Thomas does do programs for prevention, does blood pressure screenings and stuff like that, but we need to focus on CPR going forward in the future, and that's what our plan is, to stay a cardiac-ready community. So, thank you, guys, and have a good night. Any questions?
I just want to make one comment because we talked about this before, and I didn't realize those AEDs, all you do is turn them on, and then they talk to you and tell you how to run everything. So, it sounds like a complicated machine, but it tells you what to do. On a fifth-grade level, perfect for me.
Any questions?
So, it's a very cool device that we have everywhere. So, if you ever get in a situation, just open the door, turn it on, and it tells you what to do, right?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Well, thanks again. Appreciate it, guys. Okay. Does anyone else on the council want to talk about anything? I don't have anything this week before we move on.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
This should have been earlier during public commentary, but I just got a note from Elizabeth Luzak to remind us all that it's the last first Friday, this Friday night, so hopefully everyone will come out to that, one of Mitchell's favorite events on a monthly basis. So, be there for a lot of fun. I can't tell you much more about it, but do that.
There will be a dog agility contest that I will be judging, so that's the only thing. So, that'll be fun.
I think it's the dog days of summer, right?
Yes.
That's the thing. So, that's always fun.
Also, the first weekend in October, if you'd like to see the mayor ride a bull, buy a ticket to the bull riding event happening at the world's only Corn Palace, and you could see our very own Mayor Hanson get on the back and ride a bull. He said he's going to go for 12 seconds, but that's just...
I just hope I don't die. No, it'll be a fun event. I'm fully committed on making every event as fun as possible, you know. Maybe if we hit 15, Marty will jump on one. I'm not sure. Yeah, no. No. Appreciate that, yes. All right, anything else anyone wants to talk about before we move on? All righty, Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for the city council to recess and sit as the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Well, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, hearing and action of the application of Dennis House variance permit. Dennis House has applied for a variance permit for a front yard setback of 20 feet versus 25 feet to build a 12-foot by 14-foot covered patio located at 408 West 12th, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Janikus.
Mr. Mayor and Council, notices were sent out to the neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. There were three letters returned in favor of this. Planning Commission recommended approval, 3, 1 with 3 absent. He has an existing patio door there and a concrete slab. He'd like to put a roof over top of that and have it an open area, not to be enclosed at this time. Discussion during the planning commission meeting was they didn't foresee vehicles being parked in front of this area. He's got the parking in back for his driveway and such, so they didn't think that the 20-foot would be a hindrance at all for any vehicles in the future probably... possibly being parked there. It's kind of a different area in the sense that your right-of-way is actually bigger for your boulevard area, so that's why he thought he had more room. It's not a 66-foot right-of-way, but the street is narrower, so his boulevard area isn't 12'6". It's a little bit deeper there, so it's kind of deceiving as to why it's... It looks like it should be fitting, but it doesn't. So, I can answer any questions that you have.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldham and a second by Mr. Sabers. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing and action on the application for Josh Frost conditional use permits. Josh Frost has applied for a conditional use permit for outside storage and to operate Mitchell Towing and Recovery Business, which falls under the category of automotive sales, repair, parts detailing, located at 24994 406 Avenue, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Janikus.
Mr. Mayor and Council, notices were sent out to neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. There was one letter returned not in favor. It's in your packet. I did ask that Planning Commission do this in two motions, and I would ask that you do this as well in two different motions because it's two different conditional uses that they are requesting. The first one was a motion to approve outside storage conditional use permit with the condition that there is a review of the conditional use permit at the first meeting in October of 2024, and there is a plan written on paper for the materials on site, the location of where the materials will be placed, fence location and type, and also a schedule for when the... when it will be cleared... excuse me, cleaned up and organized. That passed 4, 0 with 3 absent. The second motion was to recommend approval of the automotive sales, repair, parts, and detailing conditional use permit with the condition there is a review of the conditional use permit at the first meeting in October of 2024, and there is a written plan on paper for location of the vehicle placement, fence type and location, business hours, and also a schedule for all the work will be completed. That was 4, 0 with 3 absent as well. We had a complaint from a neighbor about this location for the business being operated out there. In the packet, you can see the letter that was sent out to the applicant. He came in a timeframe that was allotted on the letter to him for both the business and outside storage portion of it. Testimonies during Planning Commission. It's two different conditional use permits. One's the business, one's outside storage, but there's a lot of discussion jointly between the two of them. A lot of them didn't have any issue with a business being put out there. They are on the list for towing. They were approved by the PD for that. They did not realize any need of a conditional use as well in the zoning area that they were at. They actually thought that there was already one on the site, but there is not. Outside storage, they did have a lot of stuff actually on city property, which we noticed when we were going through the whole Kelly... excuse me, with the Kinners for cleaning that stuff up to the north. He has pulled all that back onto his property, and now it's all sitting out there. In the packet, you can see the pictures where all the stuff is just kind of out amongst his land, and the neighbors would like that to be cleaned up so it's more organized, maybe some fencing put up, things like that. I can answer any questions that you have for me. The applicant is here as well if you have any questions for them as well.
Yeah, actually, I have a question. I feel like we're kind of sticking our neck out to approve this in the hopes that the place will be cleaned up. I would rather say, clean up the property, let us see pictures of what you've done, and then we'll discuss this next phase. But I... I mean, I feel like we've been burned before in this community where we've, you know, given people timelines and we've given them permission, and then nothing happens until this day, I'm thinking a very specific location, it's still a mess. And so, I guess my perspective is, clean it up, show us what you've done. If I were the neighbors, I'd be upset by this. This would be very upsetting to me, and then we're giving them permission to run a business which, you know, technically speaking, could bring more to the clutter. So, I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but that... I don't know. I just... I'm not comfortable having us approve this without seeing that the work's been done. Hi.
Hi, Derek Davis. I am not Josh. I am part-owner of Mitchell Towing and Recovery. Josh has already begun cleanup. It is going to keep moving forward. We have a plan on where we're going to have the storage at. Our plan is to not keep cars on property for more than 45, 60 days, just depending on... depending on what happens. I've been with everything that we've already brought in so far. I have within seven days sent out the notice that I have to send out, and then I have 30 days that we have to hold on to it after that, and then we can resell the vehicle or take it to H&R or whatever.
45 to 60 days is a long time. That's too much.
Well, we have to hold on to it for basically a minimum 37 days, I think is what it is.
So, how long do you anticipate it's going to take before you have it all organized, cleaned up, so that it's not an eyesore?
The plan is to have... We have till October, what was it, to have the plan.
That was the recommendation from them. They have the final say.
So, we had... Or the plan was to have the... everything in drawing before October or by October meeting or whatever. The plan is, we're going to have... We're going to exceed that. We're going to have most of it at least cleaned up by that time, plus the plan.
I mean, a drawing is great, but it means nothing to me in terms of what's actually going to happen. I would like to see us... Okay, see if I do this right. Postpone? Do we want to postpone this until you have the work done? And then come back and show us that it's all cleaned up and that you've made good on your... what you're telling us that what's on that piece of paper? Make sure that it's done, and then come back and let's discuss it. But I'm not comfortable approving this on the condition that... Sure hope you get it done.
But at the same time, we have a business to run, and we've... I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars already getting this business going. If something like this happens, I would fail.
So, to summarize, just to make it easy, so to summarize, at the planning and zoning meeting, they had discussed basically all the same stuff, and I went up and said, hey, can you at least give them an opportunity to operate so they can make money and not go out of business and then never clean up the property? So, the pickle we're in that we hear a lot is, they're in the county, and the county doesn't have a nuisance problem, and the neighbors have been complaining about this for a while. And I look at this as an opportunity for us to enforce our nuisance property through the conditional use permit. So, if we give them a timeline within 60 days or whatever the six weeks, if they don't get it done, you yank their permit and they're out of business. So, that's kind of their carrot at the end of the stick. During that time, they have time to clean it up, make good, make money, and then clean it up. So, in my opinion, you guys do whatever you want, but it kind of solves three problems. One, they can still run their business. Two, we make the neighbors happy. And the neighbors did say in the planning and zoning, they would be in favor of this as long as the property gets cleaned up. So, the neighbors are happy. And then, three, we can actually use this as an arm to help the county enforce a nuisance property through this conditional use permit. So, again, you guys can do whatever you want, but if you do... Again, it's a conditional use permit, so they can only use it based on the conditions that you guys set here tonight. So... And I asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to kind of do it this way. Again, you guys have the final say. So, if they're allowed to continue to operate the business, clean up the property, and get it done, the permit goes through. If they don't, they get shut down.
Yeah, I mean, I would be agreeable to that. Can you get it done in six weeks?
Yeah. I mean, don't have an option. Don't have an option to...
Right. I know. I mean, I feel like you need to have motivation...
I would go bankrupt.
Yeah. Like motivation and a deadline to get this done so that... so there's no question that... so that we make sure that it happens, and then you know what's on the line. I mean, you're...
Yeah. I mean, I've worked my tail off to get where I'm at, and I'm not going to let something like this make me fail, so...
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so we've heard a couple of different things over the last couple of minutes here. Let me talk a little bit about the jurisdictional issue first. So, this property is outside of city limits, but it's within our zoning jurisdiction, outside of our city limits and in the ETJ. We don't enforce our nuisance code. We don't enforce our ordinances generally there other than for zoning and building permits. So, that's really all that we ever do in the ETJ. So, this does fall into a little bit of a gray area where we can still regulate it via our zoning code and this conditional use. So, really, from that perspective, what we're trying to do is make sure that this stays, you know, outside storage or it stays... Oh, what was the other one? Automotive sales and repairs versus becoming a junkyard. That's what we're trying to do from the zoning side of things because we can't strictly enforce our zoning code in that area. As far as the motion and whether this board chooses to continue it for six weeks or approve it with a review in six weeks, you know, really, they're accomplishing the same objective, whichever one you want to call it. You know, they're giving a short time period for the applicant to go and do some of the work and lay out the additional details as to what they might still be able to do from that point forward. So, whether you continue it for six weeks or whether you approve it with a review, they kind of accomplish the same purpose. The big thing is, is, you know, while all of this is pending, typically, we're not requiring anybody to discontinue their operations. If you deny the conditional use permit, then we have to require them to stop. So, that's what you need to be concerned about.
Okay, well, I would definitely be in favor of allowing you to continue working and keep it where you're highly motivated, and you have a very distinct period of window of time that you have to clean up the property. So, I'll make that motion that we approve the conditional use permit with the condition that within six weeks, we have verification, pictorial proof that things have gotten cleaned up and that it's in much better... much better condition than it is now. So, that's six weeks.
Susan, can we just... Could we say that it would just be after the next zoning and planning, after the pre-approved date? I don't know what those dates are.
And Mark, didn't we talk about having some sort of specifications at this meeting?
Yeah.
So, Mark wants some... Well, not maybe not Mark, but maybe it was encouraged that we choose some things to attach to the conditional use, so we have something to work for, or is that not right?
And that was laid out in what their motion was from Planning Commission, and that's what you could put in your motion as well to have that. And we went with the first meeting in October for Planning Commission, which would actually be October 15th, and we would run it just like it was a new application again. They would have to have these documents at that time and prove that they have already begun to clean up the place. I mean, at Planning Commission, they stated that they've already started putting fencing up, putting gates up along the front side of it, so it kind of looks like H&R Salvage going down Old 16. So, it's hidden behind all of that from the roadside, things like that. That's what they would have to be required to prove at Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment at those meetings, prove that they have done that and what you would like them to do.
So, you're saying that they're saying we just have... They just have to prove that they've started?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Because I'd like to see, say, that they've completed, that they've done what we've asked them to do.
Joe Schrader, Public Works Director. If you don't mind, Mark, I'd just like to summarize quickly. So, the way I understand, stood their motion the other day, was that... So, one, they didn't have a plan to review, meaning where the cars are going to go, where they plan to put fences. They didn't have that plan in front of them, so they asked for that plan. And then, during that conversation, the applicant said, hey, by the way, we... To show good faith, we are going to start our cleanup and hopefully be close to done by the time. and hopefully be close to done by the time we come back. And Planning Commission said that is, that's great. But I do believe the, the next step at Planning Commission is, one, to see their plan. And I'm guessing they're going to extend a timeframe of that conditional use to give them adequate time to put their plan into motion that they can approve and make sure it gets done within a certain amount of time. And also put the ultimatum of, hey, you've made great effort on cleaning up your property, but we'd still like to see a little more, or it is adequate, and talk that through at that point.
And put a review timeline on that saying six months or a year. It's been done before for Board of Adjustment that, we'll see how it goes for the first year, bring it back again. And Planning Commission is just the recommendation. You guys have the final say with whatever they came up with their recommendation. They just wanted to hear back at their board again to see that plan, to see that they're starting to clean it up, and then give it to you guys again.
I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't going to be like affirm six weeks, that it's going to be a little bit longer than that. I don't want to necessarily have him feel, obviously, working on cleaning up the property is something they're working on currently. But just to make sure that we're being clear with the deadlines, that if fences aren't up in six weeks, it's not like we're going to immediately turn our backs on business in Mitchell. That we want to be supportive of new enterprise in our community.
Planning Commission's was the first meeting in October for, for Planning Commission. If you were to follow their same step, I would request that your motion be the second Board of Adjustment meeting in October. Because you already have one at, the first Monday in October is going to be Board of Adjustment. So this would be the second Board of Adjustment meeting.
And I, I mean, by all means, I'm not trying to squelch your business. I really want to see you succeed. But I also know that unless there's a high level of motivation, that this can be easily put on the back burner and it just doesn't happen. And we've seen that happen. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we have other circumstances of other people, and their properties never did get cleaned up like we had asked them to do. And so, there's this burden that you're probably carrying because we've been burned before. So, at least that's how I'm feeling. So I want to make sure that you know that we're, by all means, I want you to be successful, but I want this to be cleaned up as well. And I want this to be something that you have on the forefront of your mind and something that you're, like, anxiously engaged in working on to get it ready to, so that the neighbors in their lovely homes or whatever can look out and not be looking at an eyesore.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we're not really given anything but the option to clean it up. And I guess, I, I know some, some of you guys up here, and you know how motivated I am, and.
He's very motivated to get this done.
I, I get myself involved in way too much stuff. And this was another thing that.
So who's going to be the sheriff and say, is it going to be you, Mark, or is it going to be Mr. Nuisance Officer?
So I guess, I think that the solution would be that we would review this at our second Board of Adjustment meeting, and then also again in a year, or whatever the stipulation we want to put on it. So we would be, so they would have to come back and demonstrate to us that they were successful in completing it to the standards of this committee, this board.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want to say yeah, and they go out there and it looks beautiful, and they put the cars right back when we leave. Who's going to be the sheriff? Because it's in the county. And the county doesn't have a nuisance ordinance. So we're trying to enforce the ordinance any time.
And city nuisance officer does not have any jurisdiction out here. Just make that clear.
And that's where it comes back to, we basically got to address it through our zoning code and try to, you know, enforce the point where it goes from being one of these things that's allowed into becoming a junkyard. So that's, it's not, I'm not saying it's an easy thing to do. But it's, we, we still have a way to address it.
Can we review it on an annual basis?
I think it's a conditional use permit. It's pretty much, the, the permit itself is in perpetuity, right? So if there's ever any issues, you kind of. Yeah, and then you can just call it, hey, it's getting dirty, or whatever. We put it back on council and we review it at any time, right?
Well, I, I think everybody's intentions are very good. And I really like the idea of, of having another look at this in a year. So that gives the neighbors the ability to come in and say, this is exactly what we've had in mind, and it looks awesome. Or it's, it just didn't work out for whatever reason. So, at least the first year, I would really like to see us put another, just have this conditional use as, as coming due again in another year after it's completed. That's, and we've done that in the past, as Mark brought that up. And it, it's generally worked very well. And I, I have all the confidence in the world that you guys are going to do this. But sometimes we need a safety net, too.
So, with the existing motion, I mean, you'd be bringing it back in six weeks. And at that point, when you're hearing it again, you can put whatever additional conditions you want on it.
Yeah, that, that's at the point in time that I was thinking the year, Justin. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, we have a motion.
We had a motion. I don't believe we had a second.
We don't have a second yet.
Second now.
You'll second it. We got a second, Mr. Sabers? We have a motion and a second?
I would request that you make an amendment to your motion.
Is it my motion that is?
Yes.
Yes. So.
Most of the, we had a lot of discussions, but it almost died in my mind.
Okay.
I know, I really, no, I know, so many things that came up. I didn't think it was valid anymore. It's no longer valid.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So, I would motion that we, to recommend a review of this at the second Board of Adjustment meeting in October with the conditions of outside storage being looked at and conditional uses of the aforementioned designations in the application.
And automotive, are you going to do two separate motions? It is two separate conditional uses?
Yes.
I figured two separate, two separate motions.
Yeah, so right now, we're talking about basically outside storage. And then what they did at Planning and Zoning was saying, we're going to make a motion a second to basically the exact same rules and just do a second one. So, we have a motion by Mr. Goldhammer. A second by Mr. McCardle. Any further discussion? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak further to this? Okay, all those in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? Motion carries. Now, second, the second one for the recovery business.
I move to approve conditionally reviewing the plan at the second Board of Adjustment meeting for the conditional use of automotive sales, repair, parts, and detailing conditional use to be reviewed at that time.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? Motion carries. Hearing an action on the application for Central Plains Automation, Inc. variance permit. Central Plains Automation, Inc. has applied for a variance permit for a front yard setback of one foot six inches versus 35 feet to build a 16-foot by 40-foot office addition located at 1501 West Fourth Avenue, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, notices were sent to the neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. Planning Commission recommended approval of this for 03 absent. There were two letters in favor of it. One, that had questions about some parking for this area. They'd like to put their addition on the north side of the building. About 20 years ago-ish, they were approved for a variance at 15 feet, but they built it at 17 foot six. So they built outside of their required variance that they requested. Now they're trying to come to one foot six from the property line. They'd like to put offices in that area. The offices are contiguous to right where they're requesting to do this addition. Otherwise, they'd have to move equipment if they were, put it on the west side or on the south side of the building. And it just wouldn't be office next to office. It'd be through warehouse and things like that. I can answer any questions that you may have. Applicants here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Move to approve.
By Mr. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to ask a question as far as snow removal. Where's your door going to be?
Can the applicant come up? Is he here?
Yep. I'm Chad Klyts, owner of Central Plains Automation. Our door will face to the east, where our cement pad is there. We currently have one right there that faces to the north.
What's that?
The overhead door there? Yeah. Yep, there's an overhead door there that we don't, we've expanded in the last 20 years quite a bit. The original building was, where it's not, where it gets wider there, it's 80 footer. Original building was 135 by 60. And then we added 120 by 80. We don't really hardly, we don't use that overhead door. It was one of our unload doors early. And it no longer is. We unload all of our steel and load all of it out of the east, or west end. There's a big overhead door in the west end is where we load everything out now.
So your door's going to be right here?
Yes, it faced to the east, yep.
Then one other question. Have you surveyed the property so we don't have a situation? When we get this close, it concerns me that we get a little too far. And then it's already happened, and then we got to go, oh, we got to forgive them this time.
I don't believe that we have. Think we went off the street, measured, and, you know, that's kind of where it is. So I don't, I have not had it surveyed.
So, the buildings, you're going to be 18 inches. Are you including any overhang?
I know, I don't, we're going to put, the roof's going to come in to our other existing building. I, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not a builder. But it's going to be like that, it should be just flush with the side. We will have an overhang to the east that overhangs that door. And then I suppose, well, you know, then we'll put, the other, the other side will just be like, like that building is. There's no overhang on it right now. You know, but this will be a wood structure. That's an all-steel structure currently.
So, just for clarity, you're tearing down the existing, no?
No.
You're padding on.
So our office, our office is inside of the building, you know, wood structure, just right adjacent or right inside there. And I, I want them to be, we're not a huge business. I have about 10 full-time employees, a couple of part-time VOTech kids usually. And so we just want them to, we want that office space, because we're small, to be adjacent to each other.
How far from the curb is it?
It'll be, it's, our lot line's 12 foot from the curb.
Yeah, yeah, will you come to the podium? Or do we want to wait to make a motion and a second and then have? Okay, motion. All right, so we have further discussion. You can come up.
I'm just curious how close to the curb it was going to be.
You want to state your name and then ask your question?
I'm Nick Blacknut. And then I was just curious how far from the curb the front yard is, says, right? Front yard setback of one foot six inches versus 35 feet.
Yep, so the one, that one foot six inches is coming off that yellow line. So I'm not sure how far the yellow line is to the curb.
Uh, front yard setback is from property line, which is normally 12 foot six inches from backside of curb.
Okay.
Not from road, it's from property line is where they're requesting it from.
Thank you.
So from the curb, it'd be roughly 14 feet?
You do your 12 foot six plus a foot six. So you're 14 foot.
Yep.
From back of curb. Okay, that's, that's all.
Any, anyone else in the audience wish to talk on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before I go? Any further? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? Motion carries. Action to set the date for Board of Adjustment hearing 916-24. Alexis Crest has applied for a conditional use permit to operate a family residential daycare located at 423 West 11th Avenue, legally described as shown on the agenda.
Move to set the date.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? Motion carries. Reconvene as City Council entertain a motion for the Board of Adjustment to adjourn, and the City Council reconvene in regular session. We have a motion and a second? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Number 11, discussion on the cemetery bike path relocation. Is anyone in charge of this? Mr. Schrader?
I can start. Joe Schrader, Public Works Director. So this, this bike path plan was brought to council last year during budget session. I believe it, it came about due to the golf course improvements needing to move the trail. And there was internal discussions about moving the trail per the master plan of the cemetery project, wanting to move it in that green location of where it's being proposed. Some of the, the items that parks and cemetery has brought to me of why it's, it's needed, or they would like it to be moved, is future streets that will be in with the cemetery. There'll be less interactions with pedestrians and cars. There also is the storage area, or their grounds area in that treat area. They did lose some of their existing space with the new golf course plan. So they'll need to move into a different area in that location, which again, you'll have potential conflicts with equipment and pedestrians, which I do believe they have, potentially have that issue now. So just trying to alleviate any potential issues.
Would that allow Kevin Nelson to add anything if he feels? Or else we can answer any questions?
As far as timing and need for development of that space, we have around 460 to 470 graves available. Of those in Block 1 of Grace 2, there's 365 full graves that accept only a ground-level stone. And Aaron explained to me that that's not real popular with people. In fact, he sells 15 to 1 upright stones versus a flat stone. So when you look at how much of a challenge it is to sell those types of graves, it's, it's pretty limited. And here's some notes from him today. A flat section of this cemetery talks about the 15 to 1. Something to keep in mind as these spaces are available are the ones that over the years have been the least desired by people for numerous reasons. Steep hillsides, water issues, and so on. So it gets harder and harder to sell these spaces to people for those reasons. Anyway, just some info we thought he'd share. Other ones, we do have some doubles as far as side-by-sides available, and one lot that has four in a row. Other than that, they're getting pretty limited. So for families to go out there and buy grave sites, we need to be developing what's going to the west there. But there is three acres to the north, which is directly across from the amphitheater. It's not shown on this map, but that is another small space as well. So it would be most desirable for us to go with this space. And as Joe had mentioned, I don't know if Stephanie's able to follow along with the cursor, or do I have a motion of the cursor here? So, a pointer will get passed to me within about 30 seconds here. No, if I could just see it.
Okay.
Nope. I am color-challenged.
Oh, that's right, I'll do it. So just tell me.
So, right where she is, right there, the cursor, there's a little pathway that goes through. If he. And he's moving around like a little mouse running back and forth. So there, there's a cutaway going through the woods, going across that current path that's right now blocked off. That is the desired spot to go in for the materials. So when they take materials off a grave site to allow room for, A, the vault and the casket to go in, there is extra fill. In addition to when they take trees off from sites. If you go to the east side of that whole row of trees, where the trail presently comes out, that's where the material site had been. But when the T-boxes got extended through there, the materials are now over just to the northwest of the shop in a really ugly location. So the desire is to put those within the trees. And by going over to there, there's already a present opening to go through the trees. And it would get it out of the eye view of, of people who live in that area and people passing by on the trail. As you would come out there, people have suggested that we can just continue on with the trail along the south side of those trees, taking the angle where Stephanie is motioning with her mouse, and then continue on what is currently shared maintenance slash trail. It gets to be quite a trek there of over a quarter mile of shared space It gets to be quite a trek there of over a quarter mile of shared space of equipment going on there or bicycles or pedestrians. Yes, it does work right now, but there's a longer distance where we'd be doing that and it would need to be developed at minimum of eight feet wide and sturdier probably than a two-inch base because it will, it will break up holding, driving tractors on there and other equipment as well. So major concern is safety in terms of moving in that direction. As we go north and look further, I'm not sure how far your map goes, and look where the driving range is, we presently have a trail slash cart path and that comes within feet of people's properties. And Chief, do you have any concerns or any reports to your knowledge of people with thefts or vandalism from yards that are up along that space?
None that I'm aware of.
No, I'm scared.
So people have presented concerns that they're going to have trails in their backyards and that there's gonna be open to people being back there and who knows what's going to happen with mischief, but trails are, are close to people's yards all over. Here will be a minimum of 35 to 40 feet along that north-south stretch on the west side and on the south side, the east-west run would be 50 to 60 feet from the property line. I'm willing to answer any more questions if people have them.
Can you, um, go back to the, yeah, and can you zoom out further so we can see where that property is in relation to the cemetery? Well, it's, it's not, I can, I can, I was just curious to see where this is in proximity to, sorry, I don't know. To see where it is in proximity to the existing cemetery.
In the interim while we're doing this, is, in the absence of a bike path there, how close would a cemetery plot go to the backyard of a current residence there? I don't know if I'm asking that right, but how close can we go to somebody's backyard with a grave site?
Will you talk about the storm drain there?
So there is a storm drain, uh, line located through there, that's in the red line, uh, shown on that map. Um, so we would want probably the edge of graves at least 30 feet away from that, that storm sewer pipe. I'm not to say that they couldn't put a road over the top of that storm sewer pipe for the potential, uh, cemetery expansion if the bike path wasn't placed in that location.
So there is a potential for a perimeter road around cemetery development. You'd of course want one toward the, the outside as there is with the rest of the cemetery. There's roads going on the outside rather than needing to walk from a, a main artery through back hundreds of yards to the other end.
And the community gardens, like, I was just trying to get my bearings, um, are right in there, yeah, they don't really show up.
I think one thing to answer Tim's question would be important, how far can the graves be? Cause I believe on like Kipas Cove, there's a house that kinda sits back in one of those corners, I think it's about six feet from their property. So I guess, I would rather have the 50-foot buffer strip instead of a grave six feet from mine.
But I think it's the storm sewer, cause you don't wanna be digging around that when there's a storm sewer.
We won't be placing graves on top of the storm sewer either.
So I went out and visited this and it's a very weird situation, cause it makes sense in both places to me, but there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways to look at it either direction. You know, the one thing I, when we talked about it with city staff was the long-term planning of this, cause this is probably a, gonna be the cemetery for the next 100 years. So after speaking with Joe and Kevin, you know, they're like, well, what's gonna happen, you know, 10, 20, 50, 100 years from now? I don't have an answer, so hopefully you guys do, but that's like the one thing that they wanted to make sure was taken into consideration. If you guys, if you guys don't have anything else to talk about, I'm guessing there's some people in the crowd that would like to come up here and speak, so.
Well, I, I wanna say we're... I did visit with, uh, went out there and looked at it with Mr. Willis like a month ago and he told me, and Kevin, you can correct me when I'm wrong, he told me we're not that far from developing that into the cemetery.
The request to design the expansion is in next year's budget request that you'll be hearing in a few weeks.
Yeah, and that, so they said if there isn't a bike path, there could be a road there potentially, but I think that's gonna have to be designed and then approved and all that's gonna be a later, a later deal. But I think they said, yeah, within 10 years, the other one's gonna be out of room. So I mean, what's the soonest you would ever plan on starting to develop that? Kevin?
Three years?
Three years.
We would have a plan in place next year and could develop it within, we would need to. As I mentioned earlier, there's, the other graves are hard to sell.
So there, there's gonna be a lot of activity there, starting three years from now? Okay. Anybody else have anything else before we let these citizens come up and speak? Alright. Who would like to come to the podium and speak first?
Well, I guess I will. I'm Ron Freeman and I live at 1420 Pebble Beach Road and we've been down this path approximately 15 years ago. And there's quite a few people here tonight that live in Kipas Cove, Kipas Cove, Pebble Beach Road and Thunderbird Road. And I would just like to ask anybody that's here that feels the same as I do, that planned to come to the meeting tonight so the council can see that you're here, how many of us are here that live in that area that are opposed to the bike path? I think there's...
There's, looks like about 10 to 12 people raising their hands for everyone at home they can't see.
And we were talking about, Derek Fahey and I were talking about it tonight, he said that there's 17 homes, I was guessing 20. I personally twice have walked to every home that would potentially be affected by this reroute and I can tell you, 75 to 80% of the residents, uh, oppose having a bike path right behind us. We are not in any way, shape or form opposed to the cemetery. I think almost all of us did our due diligence, as did I. When I purchased my home over 20 years ago, I went to the city, I talked to Kevin Thurman, uh, who I know and I consider a friend of mine. He assured me that I would need a plot myself before they would ever develop the cemetery, which is no problem. You can, you can bury as many people right behind my house as you absolutely want. Residents of the cemetery don't make noise, they don't walk across our yards, they don't cause problems, they're good neighbors. So there, I don't, and I don't think, I'm not, I can, I think I'm speaking for most of us, but we are not opposed in any way, shape or form to the start of the development of the cemetery. We just don't want a bike path behind us and we found out about this. I found out about this from a good friend of mine who golfs routinely. We were never notified by anyone from the engineer's office, from the park department, from the, from the city in any way that this was going to happen. Yes, I understand that this was something that was discussed in the budget and I've looked at the map that I obtained off the city website and all it says is proposed reroute of bike path on the yellow portion. There was no blue line that I could see, um, and I think I'm, I don't think I'm colorblind, but it never talked about where the path was going to go. So we feel like this decision was made, I, I don't know who made the decision to reroute the bike path. We just, we just don't want this bike path behind our house. We're not concerned about crime, we've never had any issues that I know of. The chief indicates that there's been no issues that he knows of. Um, we just, we, we've become accustomed to and our expectation was is that there would be an empty field behind us, but knowing full well that there would be a cemetery someday and we're okay with that. Um, I feel like, I guess to conclude, cause I, I had some written statements, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read those anymore. Um, but to conclude, you could call it a pie, you could call it whatever you've got up there, there's only so many square feet contained in the side of that blue line and yellow line and you can divide it up however you want, but you're still gonna use, I walked it this morning, I walked the whole path and I have to be completely honest with you, I think it's kind of a shame for some people, I can walk a, I can walk a, a grass path, but for older people that use it, I think it's been kind of a shame that it's been closed all summer. Uh, the majority of it, when it's been mowed, I walked it this morning, I stepped over the rope, walked the whole thing. It's been closed the whole summer for people to utilize for no apparent reason and you could've done a little detour on the end. I still think you could locate this path at the north end of that field and not consume any more space and it might even give you some more space, uh, to sell cemetery plots because you can't bury somebody on top of the, the storm sewer that's there. You can't do that. I would not pave a road over the storm sewer that's there behind our house because in 2019 it failed in two locations resulting in the flooding of Thunderbird Road and many of the basements of the residents that live here, including mine. So I wouldn't do that either if I were in charge. So you're gonna expend a lot of space just to get this path out far enough away to satisfy us when it would seem much easier to me to just run the path somewheres along the north, make yourself a maintenance road. Those trees are at least, at least 40 yards wide, if not 50. I think you could find a spot in there to hide your dirt pile and still have enough room for a bike path. I got other thoughts too, but I think that's enough. I'll let somebody else come up and make a statement, so.
You do realize that if the trail's not there and if perimeter, a perimeter road is, people walk on the road as well. There's a company right across the road where people walk mid-morning, noon and midday and they will walk that perimeter, so you still have people walking in that area or riding bike.
I think, I, and that was one of the points that I had in my statement that I was gonna read because, uh, the folks who own Innovative and Vantage Point, and I plod them for it, they allow their employees to go out and walk on their breaks every single day and I see them, some of them I'm friends with, they mainly walk in the cemetery, not very far of them make it very far down the bike path. So that was the other point that I was gonna share. Um, I see those folks walking all the time in the cemetery and I don't think they're disrupting, have you had any complaints at all from anybody about the Vantage Point employees or the Innovative System employees that are walking in the cemetery?
Certainly not, they'd have new roads to walk on over that direction.
Well, most of, most of the, and this is observations of 20 years of living out there, most of the activity on the path occurs early morning and in the evening. I don't know very many funerals that occur before 8:00 AM or after 5:00 PM.
So, so what is it about a bike that bothers you guys so much?
It's not, it's not the bike, we just don't want routine traffic behind our houses. We don't want the bike path. I've been up, we, my wife and I use it all the time. We've walked up farther north, North of Country Drive, um, that bike path was installed before the majority of those homes were built, North of Country Drive on Thunderbird. And honestly, I like privacy in my backyard. I feel bad when I walk by and I know people that live up there, I feel bad when I walk by because if they're sitting on their patio, honest to God, you're not much farther than Jeff and I are apart right now. And I walk by and you kinda go, geez, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm intruding on your privacy. But everybody's different. Yeah, absolutely.
Brandon, I'm at 2704 Thunderbird Drive. So right now the temporary path is kinda right behind my property, way in the northwest, just to the west of those right there, the second one down. So in the morning I get up, I pull up my shade, look out my kitchen out in the pasture or the field, all of a sudden I got people staring right back at me in my kitchen. There's, you know, there's no planning ahead of time for me to do anything, to block any view or anything. And I don't know, how far did you say it was, the distance it's gonna be from property?
It's like you're gonna be about 18 feet.
Yeah, there's the one spot there that's roughly 18 feet.
Yeah, 18 feet, the paper said 45, 50 feet. I think you said 35. How come it's 18 feet here? That's six steps from my property to the path. That's just ridiculous. There is no privacy, I got people looking right in my window now. They're probably thinking, what's that guy doing staring at me? I'm looking out the field.
Why does it go to 18 feet there instead of just go straight?
What?
There's something in the way there, Joe?
There's a tree with a plaque there.
Oh.
I don't know, they, I don't know why you can't go around the other way. My preference still would be to use a diagonal, you got tons of trees, piles of trees over by the work thing, get that crap cleaned up, there's plenty of room for your piles of dirt over there without having to travel all the way over here. It just seems like there's not much planning in here, it's just throw it out there.
That's the kinda garbage we wanna to shelter inside of those trees. So as we take down trees, they don't...
Plant some trees, you got lots of room.
They don't get hauled daily away from there. We don't have a dump truck for the department, we borrow those from the street department. So we collect material, be that dirt, be it dead trees and stumps and it goes to a collective pile.
Why don't you do some planting, plant some more trees or even on the north side, you got lots of land there between the golf course hole, was it 14 and the cemetery, plant ring of trees around there. You aren't hauling all over the place, you don't have to worry about people.
We actually obtained a grant last year to plant a, a row of trees all along the trail that I'm talking about.
I know, if I gotta plant something in my yard to block the view, that's gonna take just as long, so. But I guess at least if you do do it this way, please push it at least 50 feet from the properties.
So to, so to answer his question, could we go the other way around that other tree?
I'd have to go out there and look at the, the topography of it, but I don't see why you couldn't swerve it out the other way with, uh, removing a few trees.
Uh, Jason Gennery, Golf and Cemetery. Yes, we would be able to go around that, uh, into the trees a little bit and around that tree with the plaque, so that wouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Unless you have, unless you have a final thought?
Well, just a couple things about people walking through yards. I mean, right now with the path there, we do have kids once in a while coming between our houses, they only have to go over one, one lot, so, I mean, there are still will be, it's not a lot of people, but yeah, they still do cut through there, just if you don't believe it, they will.
Thank you.
Chris Rutterath, 2608 Thunderbird Drive. My biggest concern is we haven't done a design of this. Um, 2019 had water within 20 feet, 24 feet of my house. It, I'm concerned if you add a bike path that's two inches high, three inches high, it's gonna cause the water to rise more on my side and I'm gonna have water issues. I haven't seen an overall design for that section, I feel like you're kinda getting the horse, the car, or the cart to head of the horse here, you know, and putting $200,000 on a bike path when you haven't designed the whole cemetery yet. Um, you know, speaking of other concerns I have of it, I think it's, there has been vandalism along that bike path, there's, as I reported to Kevin Nelson, not probably six months ago, there's white national stickers, there's been a few other things down along the path, carved in the trees, I mean, stuff's gonna happen, if you have it right on your fence, you're gonna see stuff. Um, another concern I have is you're talking about putting, piling wood and sand right by a playground, I don't think that's a really good idea. I mean, if you look, that little square right there is a playground, that's right where they were talking about piling it. That seems like a, a bad location as a parent.
It would be south of that.
South of that row of trees and to the east.
Correct.
And every kid that wants, that's at the playground's gonna be over there. I mean, they're at the pile up every night anyway at the other one, but I think it'd be much better to move it away from the playground. That's my thoughts, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to discuss this? Okay, oh.
I'm Christopher Hart, 936 Kipas Cove, so I'm kind of in that corner. Um, we've got a hot tub.
Sorry, we have some technical difficulties, it sounds like. Sorry about this.
No problem.
We are looking at upgrading the system, so. You can, you can go ahead and talk, we'll just...
No problem.
Put a sticker over the beeper.
Sounds good. Um, my concern is mostly for privacy, we've got a deck, uh, right on the other side of the trees, uh, in that bottom corner, can't see it on that picture, but, and a hot tub, I could probably high-five people on the path riding by, it's pretty close. Um, so that would be my main concern is, is when you live next to a golf course, you expect some activity. When you live next to a cemetery, you expect not a lot of activity. And so we use the cemetery, we walk in it all the time and, uh, so we know that, that people are walking around, but the path...
John, we're hoping for the cemetery funding, for the planning funding. And I think we were talking with Public Works, and they, they don't have a design because it hasn't gone out for bids yet because we're waiting for this meeting.
We do have a design complete, not to say we can't make revisions.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's it. All right. Any final thoughts on the discussion of the bike path? And hopefully the beeping will end soon. Oh, we got one more.
Christopher Hart again. If there are concerns about kids and the dirt pile, I mean, they do, even when it was further east, kids do crawl all over that thing. I mean, I would if I was a kid, but, so if that is a concern, that just might be something to keep in mind, so.
All right, thank you.
So when it comes by Dr. Hart's house, I guess she's sitting over there, she can't tell us, I was just curious how close it was to your property. If you're giving people high fives, I mean, they got 50-foot arms? Because we're talking that most of that, except for that one little sliver up top, is 50 foot or around 45 feet.
Where the trees are, I'm not sure where the path is. I didn't, I didn't quite catch that, but I mean, I was being a little facetious when I said.
He's got long arms.
But we're, we're basically butted right up to those, the trees at the property lines.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to throw something out as a, as a possibility. I know we've, we've got it designed and we're looking at trying to move forward with a, with a bid. And I don't know if this is, hopefully we, we can consider this, but I would like to have an option B as opposed to what was considered right now of going straight south and then straight to the east. But some of the comments I've been hearing, and of course, that's in my ward, they miss walking through the trees. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't plant trees, we all know that, but they, they love the existing part that's right now. And I know that, that we're looking at maybe having the dirt piles there and, you know, where, where the existing trees, where they pile them up now, obviously there is some space there, and we have some extra space. But, you know, we're not going to build any, the cemetery, I don't think, real close to the new 15 T-box, but I don't know that for a fact. But if, I think if maybe we just take a step.
Seeing the bike path in its current location and find another way to enter into that cemetery. I mean, currently, the bike path is all around the cemetery. I'm just wondering if there's a way to still have the cemetery where it is, but have a different access point to that cemetery. And, you know, we've got the golf course, so it seems to me like there, we talked a little bit about if there's a funeral going on, you don't want someone teeing off on the green right next to your, you know, when you're in a bereaved state or whatever. You want to make sure that there's a buffer. So I'm thinking that this bike path potentially could provide that buffer zone. What we, all we need to do is figure out another alternative way to still use that as cemetery, find another way to access it and maintain the existing bike path that could be our buffer between recreation and cemetery. That would be what I would feel like, what I'd like to see as part of Plan B that Jeff is describing, that's my.
Jason, can I have you come up so you can answer a couple of questions?
I guess, as far as the cemetery, because I'm pretty familiar with the area, as far as the dirt and the clay, I'm assuming the payloader when you dig is what takes it there?
No, our heavy-duty utility vehicles is what goes back and forth for the most.
Correct, correct.
Every once in a while, we use a one-ton. Payloader, a lot of times, is bucking up the piles. We dump the trees in a spot and then it, we can't get it bucked up. We dump the trees in a spot and then it, we can't get it bucked up.
As far as the dirt hauling and stuff, because I know where you did keep it and I know where the 15Ts are, so you can't get it to where you want it to be from the old way because that's where the T-boxes are.
Yep.
So if you wanted to, your choices for putting the clay in the dirt.
If, if I'm not able to do anything within the trees, because that's what, I was requested to try to conceal.
In order to get them in the trees, you have to cross the bike path?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah.
With a payloader and trucks?
Yeah.
Alright. Options, if this happens, where it's at?
So if we're not in the trees, the other option is to come on, all the way on the south side of the trees that are there. We're trying to stay away from the community gardens because we use that for parking equipment and whatnot.
You still have to cross the bike path?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, the bike path goes up by the gardens.
Yeah.
Is there any options where you, where you don't have to cross the bike path with heavy equipment?
Just going all the way around the south side.
But you can't get there with the new hole in the new T-boxes?
Well.
Where you used to get there, now it's?
So the, what's going by the community gardens right now, that was originally a maintenance road. That wasn't a bike path.
Okay.
So we would access that. What we'll probably do is where my line of equipment is right now, what my plan was, is we would access on the south side or north side of that and then cut across to the existing maintenance road.
Which is the bike path?
Which is the bike path right now, yes. And, and for the most part, when we're, when it's dry, it's not a problem, but when it's muddy, we gotta go in there regardless, so we're dragging mud out onto the bike path. We don't always get it moved off there right away, unfortunately. So, I mean, there's, there's multiple reasons why this was brought up. Another thing was, like I said, was brought up is to take the bike path, bike traffic around the outside of the cemetery, not through the middle, so.
Say that one more time.
The, one of the main things was to take the bike traffic all the way around the outside of the cemetery and not through the middle of the cemetery.
All the way around?
Yeah.
Along the, the miller road?
No, no. Coming up our west.
Just the blue line that we're discussing.
Coming up our west entrance.
All the way.
No, 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 no.
That's a totally different.
Nope, yep, yep.
Mr. Thurman, you have something else you want to add? It looks like you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Thurman again. You brought up a good point about the stages. The cemetery is always gonna need a dirt pile, and that dirt pile was there long before the houses were there. At one time, it was dumped in the center of the cemetery, down through the drainage area, and it was just ugly mess throughout the whole cemetery. So we moved it up there and then with trees and the weather, you don't always get in and out when you want to with, with debris and dirt. The cemetery always needs a large amount of dirt available for filling and leveling and processing. You could split the difference and keep both sides happy right now, going, say, halfway down the tree line of the west of where the dirt spoils were, 15T box, and drop a road down and tie in and come across. The cemetery will be developed in stages. It's not gonna fill up overnight, and we're not, and we'll wanna develop the graves closest to, you know, in talking with Jason and staff, the graves closest to the roads and closest to the servicemen cemetery first and expand west. So it'll be 50 or more years, depending on how Mitchell grows, before we're ever over in that area.
Kevin, would you do me a favor and show us on, up there, like, point to what you're referring to? I think we have a pointer that's up there.
He's got long arms.
He's got some.
Do you, should we bring one of the different?
Where the bike path comes through here, this is a congested area. It gets dirty on there anyway from us, you know, with trucks and muddy times of year when we're trying to fill and remodel graves and doing dirt work. Usually, this thing bike path will point here, drop down, and try to tie into one of these roads.
That right in the middle?
Yep.
And then start developing, you know, this area first, moving west. And by the time we're over here, none of the homeowners, me.
That's what they got built 20 years ago.
You're all gonna be on the other side of the bike path, right?
So, you know, I think it's developing in stages and adding the roads as needed and reestablishing the bike path in phases as you move both roads.
And just inching it closer.
But Kevin, if you propose that, that phase like that, at some point in time, the road that, the bike path that we're putting in is gonna be obsolete or not, not in the middle of the cemetery, then you're gonna go out to the blue line.
Eventually.
Isn't that a waste of money?
Well, I think that bike path would just get converted into a road. It'd just be a cemetery road at that point.
So it would get gobbled up as part of the cemetery walking path or?
Yep. So to summarize, it sounds like the direction we would wanna go to is maybe explore some different options and then bring different options at a later time, and then we could decide whether it's a good idea or not. Does that sound about like a good summary?
I just wanna ask those people, I, I respect you for wanting privacy in your backyard, so what is that distance you would like? So if we're gonna do a Plan A and a Plan B, what do you want?
I think it's more than distance. It's, let's do.
You'll have to come up to the podium.
For me personally, Chris Rutter out again, it's more than distance. It's, can we do some landscaping to add some privacy? Can we, you know, if you drive along 23rd, there's a hedgerow, there's trees, and then there's graves. You know, I was envisioning when I first moved there that there'd be some kind of divider, you know, not just right on the edge of the property line, you know. I guess that's, that's what I personally envisioned and would like to see.
Thank you.
Well, I think what Kevin just brought up makes a lot of sense, and, and what Marty brought up makes even more sense, is we don't wanna waste money, but if we can then, like we talked of someone envisioning where the lines would be with, with the roads, with the cemetery, and, and utilize that as bike path, and then eventually you'd be, the bike path would be moved, but because they would be turning into roads. So you would, you would continue to have bike path that is, they will double as actual cemetery roads down in, in the future. So then you wouldn't be wasting any money.
But we wouldn't really know that until we have the cemetery plans, which is budgeted for next year and when we, I guess the, the solution we're looking for is where are they gonna ride their bikes next year or the rest of this year? Was this plan to get done this year or next year? I think we're looking for an interim solution.
It was budgeted for this year.
Okay.
My only concern that I don't know the answer to is, we would, I would assume we'd wanna complete the bike path this fall yet, so it could be opened again?
Yep.
Assuming? So regardless of the direction we're going, if we're not gonna proceed with path blue, I would, my, my recommendation to council would be is to connect the path with the path of least resistance, wait until you get the cemetery plan, and then use the cemetery plan to build your future roads. And then ultimately, you could potentially keep that outside, or worst-case scenario, it gets removed, best-case scenario, you could keep it as a future cemetery road or golf course path.
So the direction we should go is to explore further options, but we need some sort of temporary bike path to offer the least amount of resistance that would make the neighbors happy. Does that sound correct? Does that sound like, that's the direction we should go? We're not making any decisions here, we're just, this is a discussion, but tomorrow, we gotta think about what we're gonna do.
Joe, hey Joe, we got this on for discussion, obviously. When, when do you need directions of, what kind of timeline are we on? Because I, obviously, we gotta get the bike path open.
Well, that's what I mean.
Probably tomorrow.
Yes. I'm hoping there would be some sort of direction coming out of tonight. But if you would like us to put something together, the, we could have something to do again in two weeks to review.
So as, as we work forward towards a solution to this tomorrow, next week, and the weeks going forward, should we design something that would cut across to appease everyone for now that would maybe later turn into a road?
I, I just have a question. Why, why don't we just leave it where it's at until we have the design? Is there?
The issue is, is, the bike path is not connected. It's.
Yeah, there's just a big grassy.
Grass.
And what's running through the trees needs repairs. There are three- and four-inch gaps in the asphalt in there.
I didn't make my, that far in my tour.
I walked it this morning and yeah, it needs some repairs, but most of the path is completely intact. There's some cracks that could easily be filled. I worked when I was in college because of the cracks on the highway. What you need is a little patch and repair mix.
So, so going forward, council, if you had to give me some direction to make sure the staff gets steered in the right direction, what, what, what direction would you recommend we go?
Personally, I think, looking to see what, I don't wanna say repairing it, if the repairs are $50 million, but if it's an affordable thing that we can do easily to get by this year into next year, once we have the design of the further, like, how are we gonna put roads and where the roads will be? I think that that would be the most cost-effective way to do this project going forward, that if the blue line is, does not sound like there'd be support for that anymore, and so where are we going to cut the path to make sense for everything that's gonna be used out there, homes, cemetery, and bike path?
So I think going forward tomorrow, we'll work on just some preliminary designs and bring it at the next council meeting, if that makes sense.
And, and currently, I mean, when we were out there, there were people running on the current bike path, even though it's not open technically, they were still using it. So maybe we make those minor repairs for the interim until we're prepared with the final determination of where we want this bike path to go.
Your biggest fear is that your, your weather gets away from you and you're not able to get back in there until spring, and then we have to close it anyway, because to the point where people can't, I don't wanna say safely navigate, but without getting super muddy or putting huge ruts in the road with your bike, those types of things.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Can I make a quick comment? So we had a slight problem with the audio, so I did have to turn off and restart the stream. If someone, if you're getting a text that someone's not seeing it on cable TV, we did reach out to them to try to grab the new stream, so there's two parts to this video tonight. We are live streaming again and recording.
Yep. I responded to a few texts already. Alrighty. If that's everything, we'll move on to the fun stuff. The presentation on the Northwest Drainage Study by McLaurin Engineering.
Are you alright with?
She's gonna bring it up, I think, real quick. We had some technical difficulties. Thank you, guys.
Got you. Appreciate it.
So this, just while, while we're waiting, this is the third and final of the three drainage studies that we are reviewing, and then we can kind of decide which direction we will be going as far as future planning to see what we should do in the future for drainage. Okay, I, well, we're almost there. Bear with us just one moment. Alright. Yeah?
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about.
I'm not sure if this is in that region, is it? Oh, maybe it is. Yeah, I guess it is. Okay, yeah, it's just on the south side of that, that area. Okay, there we go. Let her out.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Ryan Murtha. I'm with McLaurin Engineering, one of the senior project managers there. So tonight, I'm gonna talk to you about the Northwest Drainage Study that we completed for the city, kinda walk you through the, the process of that and the, the findings of it, so you can go ahead and go to the next slide there. Just a real quick overview, I'll give you guys a bit of an overview of the, the study location, because we do have a few different areas we were talking about, and each one of those had individual goals. So, and I'll talk you through each one of those separately, how we, how we analyze things, and then, yeah, go down into each of the study areas. So, go ahead and, next slide. In general, the, the overall study location, we're kind of in the northwest corner of town in general, so you can see the, the Highway 37 bypass running through the middle of this. We've got three different study areas. Study Area 1 is in green, Study Area 2 is in the pink, and Study Area 3 was in blue. So on the north, we're bounded by 23rd, on the south, by 8th. On the east side, we're up against Sanborn, and on the west, we're up against the BNSF Railroad. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So in general, the way that, that we put this one together, we built a stormwater model of the entire drainage system throughout the, all three study areas, and then we worked through some proposed conditions for each of them. So Study Area 1 has its own scenario, Study Area 2 had a couple of scenarios, and then Study Area 3 is Scenario 4, so that's what we'll be diving into. Go ahead and go to the next one. So with Study Area 1, so this is the area in green here, this is the land in Westwood addition, so bounded on the north by Olmen Street, on the south by, excuse me, bounded on the, the west by Olmen, on the east by, by the 37 bypass, the north by 23rd, and on the south by 8th. So with this drainage area, the objective here was to model the existing drainage network in this addition and look at it in a fully-developed condition. That way, we could evaluate the existing detention ponds and identify any issues with those detention ponds or the pipe network. So it's not, it's not a design scenario so much as an evaluation of the existing network that's in place when this is a, in fully-developed condition. So that area in green is about 207 acres. In addition to that, there's about 123 acres that flows from the pink area into that development, and then about 17 acres from the blue area that also flows into there. Right now, Study Area 1 is partially developed with a mixture of commercial and industrial, and then there's some single and multifamily housing in the northwest corner. And water moves from the southeast, works its way up to the northwest, ultimately into a detention pond up there before it outlets through a large pipe that heads up towards Lake Mitchell. Go ahead and go to the next slide. These two images just give a little bit of an idea of the existing conditions, how we broke this all down. So, kinda hard to see in this image, but all these areas in red are all individual basins that essentially all flow into this. So we've got areas both on the west and east sides of that bypass that all flow into this and work their way up. We also have this area by Twin City Fan that also drains across Olmen and into that same drainage network. On the right side, we just show some of the existing storm sewer that's in place and the drainage paths and stuff as everything works up towards the north. So that's just the existing conditions. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Again, Scenario 1, our goal here was just to evaluate what happens during the fully-developed condition. So we're looking at those existing drainage structures and the detention ponds and how they handle being fully-developed. So we modeled both the five-year and the 100-year storm event, and what we found is that the detention ponds were actually capable of handling both of those design storm events. There's also some larger drainage channels, some open drainage channels that convey water through this, this study area, and none of those did exceed, none of those exceeded capacity during those design events. We did, however, have some pipes and inlets and junction boxes that were over capacity, which would be expected to lead to some localized flooding. Next slide. And so, again, it's a little hard to see up there, but there's two detention ponds, one, one a little bit further south. It may not be viewed by many as a detention pond because it, it's a little less developed than what we normally think of with detention ponds, but essentially there is storage in there. It's just, it's grown up with grasses and stuff. And then there's the one in the northwest corner by Olmen and 23rd. So these two images show the expected water boundary in both of these detention ponds during the five- and 100-year events. So outlined in blue, in each of these, that is where we would expect the water line to be during a five-year. that is where we would expect the water line to be during a five-year storm event, and in red is what we would anticipate during the 100-year storm event. As designed currently in a fully developed condition. So we looked at all the zoning for that whole study area, and we said, okay, this is all zoned as industrial. So once we build that all out, all that industrial is built out, and all that runoff runs to this detention pond, what happens? And that's what we're seeing would happen.
So are you understanding my question, though?
I assume so, but...
Yeah. Are those, as they currently exist?
The ponds, without any additional work, as they currently exist during 100-year storm event, this is how we would anticipate it to look once all the development is built out. So as it stands today, if that 100-year event happens, we would anticipate those lines actually wouldn't be that far. They'd be further inside because the development hasn't all happened yet. Sound good? Okay. The next area, Study Area 2, the area shown in pink, this is the area to the east of the Highway 37 bypass up to Sanborn. And then on the south side, it's bounded by 8th, and on the north by the bypass again. So this study area had a totally different objective. In this study area, what we were looking at is developing and modeling options to reroute water away from the Sanborn Boulevard storm sewer system. So we were asked to look at, there's numerous storm sewer lines that all tie into Sanborn, and we were asked to look at options to reroute that stormwater away from Sanborn to provide some relief to that system. So in general, this is more of a conceptual review just so we can have a starting point for future projects. These aren't saying, hey, you need to do this project and this project. These are some options that we can look at to try to pull water away from that Sanborn system. The area in pink, it's about 227 acres. It's nearly fully developed with residential, commercial, recreational spaces. And then in general, most all the roads are fully developed. So a lot of the storm sewer systems would all be considered developed as well. Just to clarify a couple of things here, because as I talk about pulling water away from Sanborn, so there are four drainage basins that all drain towards Sanborn Boulevard. There's another four that actually drain west to culverts that go underneath Highway 37 bypass. So there is water currently going west underneath that Highway 37 bypass. And then we've got one area that does not really have a defined outlet and just kind of builds up water and infiltrates in. Next slide. So again, these are just giving us some perspective of the areas that we're looking at. On the left, you can see, we show three detention ponds on this. Those are the areas that we're looking at. We would be looking at putting the water that we'd pull off of the Sanborn system. On the right, again, this is going to be hard to see, but I do want to point this out because as I go forward explaining some of these things, I'm going to refer to four different storm sewer laterals. And by laterals, I'm just talking, we've got our trunk line, and we've got the lines that are tying into our trunk line. So each lateral, I'm just considering as one of the lines tying into our storm sewer system on Sanborn. So we've got four different areas. Lateral 1 is up here in the north. That's the area from basically 16th to 19th. So that picks up water in that area and ties in just north of 16th. We've got an area on, we've got a lateral on 15th. So that drains all of 15th, carries it over to Sanborn. We've got 13th and 14th, that would be lateral number 3. And then lateral number 4 is going to be 9th, 10th, and 11th. So those are the four different areas that I'm going to refer to in the next slides here. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Alright, so for Scenario 2, we've got two different alternatives. Alternative A, again, we're just looking at how do we pull water off of the storm sewer system at Sanborn. So as we pull water, move it a different direction, we have to keep in mind, we're not looking to flood anybody else. So how do we do that? As we reroute those flows to the west, we're looking at dropping them into areas that currently already drain west, but if we can't increase the flows underneath the highway, we need to build storage to hold that water in the interim so that we can meter it out at the same rate it's currently going out. So that's why we have the detention ponds shown here. Just saying, if we pull this water off and try to go west with it, we need to hold it so that we can meter it out. So lateral 1, now we're looking at kind of up in the Mitchell Christian area, taking it to a detention pond just north of 15th. I can go to the next slide there. Lateral 2, again, we're talking about an area here on 15th. We'd be taking water from that and flowing along 15th. In this alternative, we had a series of cascading detention ponds kind of just outside of the baseball fields there to try to alleviate some of the pipe, or reduce the amount of pipe and the size of pipe that we would be utilizing. Lateral 3, talking about going along 13th, carrying all that water back to that same detention pond right along the bypass. And then the next slide, our fourth area that we talked about, we'd be picking up water from 9th, 10th, and 11th and carrying that through past the activity center and past the middle school into a detention pond kind of just north of 8th and along the bypass. So those are the four areas that we studied.
Can I ask you, like, just a little question? So these detention ponds, when you have them up by the baseball diamonds and in some of these high-traffic areas where there's lots of kids, talk to me about that.
Yes, absolutely. So I was actually going to clarify that on the next slide. So that's not a problem. No, I appreciate the question. I do appreciate the question. So just, I'll walk through, just real quickly the results. I'm not trying to get into the weeds on anything, but what we found is way up on the north with the area near Mitchell Christian, we can't actually pull all that water away. We tried, but some of it would still have to go to Sanborn. We can take a lot of it, we can't take all of it. So we would still have to have some of that water go into Sanborn. When we get to 15th with those cascading detention ponds, what I'm talking there is just, you know, one pond that spills into the next and works its way down. Those ponds would be shallow areas that would drain out between rain events. We're not talking about permanent storage in any of those. And also, I don't want anybody to get caught up in the details of this. This is a conceptual overview to just provide a springboard going forward. We're not saying this has to be the design. These are options that we can look at if we want to go down these routes. There's a lot that would have to be considered. Many factors that have to be considered even to decide which, if any, of these options we're going to try to tackle. So, does that answer your question? Is that fair? Okay, thank you. Lateral 3 and 4, what we found there, so basically from 9th to 14th, all those pipes were able to pull all that water. If we want, we could pull all that water away and take it all to the west. So we can get all that water off of the Sanborn system if that's determined to be an advantage. Lateral 4, the one issue there was just our proximity to the activity center and the school. So that's something that would also have to be considered. So we can go to the next slide. Alternative B, we are looking at exact same study area. We just looked at two different changes. The first being along 15th, eliminating those detention ponds because of potential concerns. And then on the next slide, we're looking at, on lateral 4 there, down on the south end, instead of going through by the school and the activity center, if we rerouted things further south, all the way down to 8th, and if we could go that route. So next slide, our results from that. Essentially, what we found, if we eliminate those cascading detention ponds, we got pretty flat grades. We're probably talking about a lot bigger pipe. Some increased costs there and stuff. So those are things that would have to be weighed out. And then with that area down by the school, number 4 there, we have some pretty high elevations through that area. So it's going to be increased pipe depths, possibly increased costs. So again, these are just things that will all get weighed out as you dive into this and decide which route we would go, if any, on these. Next slide, the final study area that we looked at in blue there. This is the land between Olmen and the BNSF Railroad. And then on the south, we've got 8th, and on the north, we've got 23rd. So the objective of this study area is we wanted to look at the effects of taking water from Area 3 and running it through the drainage system in Area 1. So basically, the question was asked of us, hey, we've got a big detention pond in Area 1. Can that handle the water from Area 3 so that we have somewhere to go with it? So that's what we were analyzing. The area in blue there, it's about 62 acres, and currently that drainage is fairly poor in most of it because it's really flat topography, doesn't really have defined flow paths, and there's a big chunk of it that doesn't actually have an outlet. So water just ponds up until it can soak away into the soil. Go ahead and go to the next slide. First image here, north is actually to the left on this image, but this shows, this is Twin City Fan. That area, as I mentioned, actually already does drain into Study Area 1. So that water's already going across the road. The rest of this area all kind of flows down to a low point in the middle, and then just generally sits there. When we put together this analysis, this model, really all we're looking at is Study Area 1 as it is, and we added one pipe to carry the water underneath Olmen Street. So that's really the major difference between this and the very first scenario we ran. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So what we found here, well, I guess to clarify one other thing, with Study Area 3, we limited the discharge of water to a pre-development condition. And the reason we did that is the City of Mitchell's current ordinance says that we essentially can't release more water than is being released during pre-development. So we looked at this saying, okay, as they develop Study Area 3, the developers are going to have to install their own detention ponds, and that in itself will limit those flows. So we analyzed this with Study Area 1 being fully developed and Study Area 3 limited to pre-development flows. Basically, we just carry water to get Study Area 3 to drain. We'd carry water through ditches along Olmen Street, pipe it underneath Olmen, and continue it up north to that same detention pond in the corner of 23rd and Olmen. What we found is, again, the detention pond was capable of handling that flow so for both the five and 100-year events. So that is an option to carry water over into that development. And we really only had one additional pipe that had any issues with the addition of that water. So, yeah, with that, I believe the next slide is just going to ask if you have any questions. I know I kind of plowed through that fast, but there's a lot of detail that I tried to overlook so we didn't get too far into it. If not, that is all I have for you.
Any questions? Any questions from anyone?
Joe, is this the final report, or do you have some other areas that you were thinking about?
So there are areas in towns that we have not studied yet. And quite a bit. We have Main Street basically going east, being north of Dry Run Creek. We also have the cemetery Augusta Kemper area. That hasn't been studied yet. So those would be areas that we would want to potentially budget for, to do additional studies.
Ryan, would you put that map back up there once? On 8th Street there? I'm curious why you stopped at 8th Street when the flow of the water south of 8th Street still goes north. So the city shop floods all the time. That water has to go north.
Oh, whoops, sorry.
Let's see.
Where's the culvert that goes under the road there, Mike?
Oh, you were talking about this map here, Mike?
Yeah. Just zoom in on there, like, under the green.
Right there, yeah. Where you go in, it always floods. On the south side of the road, you can't take the water across that. So I'm curious why you didn't include that in your boundaries of what's flowing to the basin.
I'm going to have to ask a little bit of forgiveness. This study is a couple of years old already, and so my memory is not, as far as that exact situation, I don't know that I have that answer, but I do not recall a culvert that actually goes underneath the road right there. I'm not saying it doesn't flow that way, but from our, just looking back even to our pipe network, I do not believe there is actually a culvert underneath the road there.
There, man. And the one thing I am going to point out that I'm, the obvious thing that I thought the question would come, but it wasn't. Obviously, the ponds were filled up more than what they were shown and were not as developed in that area. And I just want to point that out, too. We had more rain than the 100-year event and what that could handle. And I'd have to maybe ask Ryan on this one, but I do believe that the runoff coefficients from the type of field that's out there to develop isn't that far off from being developed. Is that accurate?
That is a fair statement, yes.
So people that are concerned for development moving forward in that area, unless we are going to require retaining or handling stormwater above a 100-year event, we will continue, when events are over at the 100-year event, we will see water come out of that pond. But the good news is we didn't affect any structures on any of our last flooding events, to my knowledge.
So would it be beneficial to create a deeper detention pond then?
Not necessarily deeper. Detention ponds have it by their volume. And in those types of ponds, you get it by your surface area, so you'd want to go out. Because usually, you can't go deeper because you're already set on your depth by your outlet pipe.
We were asked to generally look at this pond in terms of if we could attain more capacity in it, and there is still some potential to further develop that pond if that was deemed necessary. I do also understand, obviously, when we start getting the results back of our modeling and we're putting a graphic up there that does not match the flooding that was seen by people, I understand it is a hard thing to even put up there because I also expected that question to be one of the first ones that I received. But, yeah, that ultimately is, Joe is right. We're not talking about the same event. We're talking about analyzing 100-year event, whereas the floods of the past have exceeded that event. So in general, we analyze this based on standard practices in the City of Mitchell's ordinances, and so that's what we did with the 100-year. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on drainage? Yes. Come on up.
This is the last thing I thought I would be talking about tonight. And I am not an engineer. But we're just visiting, and this, thank you for doing this study because it's a real problem. And I was going to ask the question, that red line was greatly exceeded in June. In fact, the water, it was so close to going over 23rd and spilling over into our neighborhood. When I drove over there the first time, and the day after the flooding, I thought, holy, you know what? Because it was real close. My concern is draining any more water from the east to that pond is not going to help. I am, I am not an engineer, but I've lived out there long enough and grew up in Mitchell, in the 600 block of West 12th, and that entire area from 8th Avenue North where Coca-Cola is and the bypass, that was all a massive slew at one time. I hunted out there as a kid, and now it's all been filled in. So there's nowhere for that water to go in all the lots that have been filled in. I'm kind of speaking out of my area of expertise, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist just to figure out if that water's going to the northwest, it can't, the pond can barely handle what it had. And we kind of laughed back there, but someone made the comment up here, where's all that water going? And Dana said, in our basements, which is what, is what is happening in our neighborhood. But, so, thank you for at least studying the issue, but there needs to be some deeper ponds out there or more ponds to retain that water.
And that's why I kept saying, at, at its current capacity, are we talking about, when you're showing those diagrams? My question was, is that current capacity? And I guess what I should have said, is that a five-hundred-year storm or a thousand, whatever it is, at our, at that current capacity? Because obviously, it wasn't adequate.
Yeah.
In nineteen, I guess, last year.
It was, you're correct. It was out of its banks, uh, for those storms. Um, like I said, in that area, no structures were affected. Um, I know, obviously, in other parts of town, uh, structures were affected.
But had, had that been, had that been able to take on more capacity, would there have been people who, it wouldn't have gotten water in their basements because of it?
No.
Because the water would have had somewhere to go? You said it was over the, its banks? You don't think it would have affected that?
No, no residences in this drainage area within, now not, I know he showed a few colored areas that had, or, Stephanie, can you go to like this, the second, uh, slide?
Yeah, so further north in a different drainage study, they had water issues. So it's just separate drainage basins.
The area in green did not have, uh, any affected structures due to surface water flooding. Um, the area in, uh, purple or pink, uh, there's a small, this, this is the additional area. Um, but there are some areas that are in that, that are in the sandbore and drainage basin that do. So like Thirteenth, um, in Wisconsin, that area floods. What we looked at here is the potential to reroute some of that water through detention ponds, that through the proper staging of water, that that water would be allowed to be released to, um, through this drainage basin and alleviating the flooding that's in that area. Um, so, yeah, this, this stormwater in this area does not affect any of the water that is north of Twenty Third, north of Twenty Third.
And I guess that was my question, that was part of my question, that what, like, is the water, and I know that this isn't what the study's about, but that water that's north of Twenty Third, what direction is it flowing?
That drains through the cemetery to the lake.
But I don't think there's anyone that would disagree that digging that pond deep, a little deeper or a little wider wouldn't.
Yeah, and I guess I should say that also that the pond is not at its full capacity. So we do have material that we need to remove as that area continues to develop.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak about this drainage? Oh, we got someone.
I'm Chuck Moszewski and I, I own CGM Consulting. I've owned the green area number one for over twenty-five years. I'm not an engineer, as somebody said, but I've paid a few experts and, uh, I have some questions. I couldn't even remember them. Do you live in Mitchell?
I did not live in Mitchell, no.
Um, Joe has covered it well and others have tried. If a bathtub is two inches deep or a bathtub is ten feet deep, just to exaggerate, I guess we could all figure out which one holds the most water. And Joe, uh, it identified that would be better if it was deeper. That's one of my main concerns. I have some other questions, as best I can remember them. And I think we got somewhat cleared up in the last few minutes. The pond, as you showed the red line twice in my twenty-five years, and Joe has acknowledged that, has exceeded that red line. When a fire hydrant is underwater on the side of a street, and that was all below the red line, the water was deeper than the red line. So I, I want to make that point and I think we're on the right track of, of helping that problem with more retention. Um, I want to ask a couple of questions about Olman Street. Your Area Three, somebody mentioned, like Mike did, uh, you know, why you didn't go south of Eighth. Well, we got a lot of water over Olman Street. We were all blocked off and couldn't drive there for four days. And it wasn't coming from more than that Area Three, I believe. And, uh, so there's a lot of water from the west. And, and, uh, I want to say here that I appreciate this meeting tonight to talk about this subject because I've been trying to talk about it for over twenty years. Uh, I've had the pond approved twice by the city to dig and now we're getting close, I think, to getting that done. So I appreciate that and I appreciate this meeting tonight because that's the only way we can improve, um, if we have meetings like this. But I do want to note that that area to the west of Three is giving us a lot of water, um, to go over the road as long as it did. It was more than just that little strip of Three. Do you agree, Joe? We get water from the west?
I can't recall if there's a culvert that comes under the railroad tracks.
There is one. There was one. Tim asked about it twelve years ago and we, we agreed to putting it there. And it helped Twin City Fans a lot.
Under the railroad tracks?
Under, under.
Stories show on Eighth Street, they piled one underneath there probably four or five years ago. The railroad did that and drained from, uh, west side of the tracks to east side of the tracks.
The one I'm speaking about is a different one.
Okay. Like I, this, like Ryan said, this study was a while ago.
Well, there is one that I know of, other than what Mr. Bakke knows of. And then because we gave permission to do it and helped Twin City Fans about twelve years ago.
And Ryan's crew did survey that entire area and looked for culverts. So I would have, I believe they would have included it in their design.
It, it's, it, it did improve the situation and, um, I'll, I'll stand here and say I'm really happy that we're meeting like this. I'm not looking for any confrontations because this is the first glimpse I've seen of progress. And so I'm happy for it. But there is one pipe for the purpose of Twin City Fans under Olman.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I guess I was asking more along the railroad tracks.
Yeah, and, and west of there is my question. And I don't know what gets done about it, but they give us a lot of water. We're at the bottom of this bathtub on, on Area One.
I do know the elevator does have a storm drainage system with a pond. I'm not entirely sure where they discharge to.
I think we said tonight that as there's development in Area Three, they have to do some retention.
Yes, certainly. Yep, they'll have to follow our ordinance.
I think we'd all agree that's way overdue, particularly if they develop.
Yep.
You know, you referred to Area Two is quite developed and so they're not going to give us more water than they already are, it sounds like.
By our ordinance, they can't.
Pardon?
By our ordinance, they can't.
Okay. And I'm proud of what we're doing with our pond in the middle. It's just a slew, as somebody said, but it's doing a good job of holding water. Um, I'll stop there, but I'm happy that we're having this discussion finally. Uh, twenty years ago, last month, I made an agreement with the city, Alice Claggett, to do what we're talking about tonight, and I think it's finally going to happen in part. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this topic before we move on? All righty. Number thirteen, hearing action of the following alcohol license applications. On application of Odyssey Entertainment, Inc., doing business as Odyssey Luxury, two oh nine North Lawler on a retail on-off sale of malt beverage in South Dakota Farm Wine License, Video Lottery is not included. Any issues?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Chief Knippeling, uh, the Police Department has no issues with this.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hearing action on the following license on application to transfer RL five seven seven one retail on sale, on sale liquor license from Bradley Theme LLC, doing business as Scoreboard Pub and Grill, five twenty-two North Main Street to Bradley Theme LLC, doing business as Bradley's Pub and Grill, five fourteen North Main Street, Video Lottery is included. Chief Knippeling, do you have any issues on this?
Police Department has no issues on this one either.
Okay. We got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing action on the following license of the application to transfer RB two eight four six retail on-off malt beverage in South Dakota Farm Wine License from Bradley Theme LLC, doing business as Scoreboard Pub and Grill, five twenty-two North Main Street to Bradley Theme LLC, doing business as Bradley's Pub and Grill, five fourteen North Main Street, Video Lottery is included. Chief Knippeling.
No issues on this one either.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to discuss this?
Anybody?
All righty.
When, when will you need these licenses to be official?
Why don't you come on up and answer some questions?
Come on. Free advertising.
Just sat through the whole drainage study for this.
Mayor and Council, Jen Bradley, Bradley's Pub and Grill. We hope to be open on Thursday, September nineteenth.
Woo!
Yeah, so, uh, lots of i's to dot and t's to cross, but it should be done. Two weeks ago, the last day at the current location will be Monday, September ninth. So just a few more days, end of our era.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. On the application to transfer RW sixty-five oh nine on and off sale wine and cider license from Bradley Theme LLC, doing business as Scoreboard Pub and Grill, five twenty-two North Main Street to Bradley's Theme LLC, doing business as Bradley's Pub and Grill, five fourteen North Main Street, Video Lottery is included.
No objection.
We got a motion by Mrs. Charks. Second by Mr. McCartell. Any further discussion? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. On the application of the Corn Palace Shrine Club for a special event liquor license located at the Masonic Hall for September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four for a wedding.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve special event permit application for Tiger Trail Trek Five K Run on Saturday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, Kuanis Woodlot Park Area Trail Closure.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Aaron Heeb. The Dakota Wesleyan University Cross Country and Track and Field Teams are going to host their first annual, uh, the Tiger Trail Trek Five K Run on Saturday, October fifth, from seven AM to nine AM. The submitted special event permit application is requesting a closure of the portion of the Kuanis Woodlot Park Area Trails. Um, you can view and reference the, uh, attached closure map there for the exact boundaries and location, um, for their requested closure. They've already provide, provided us with a certificate of liability insurance form for the event and staff recommend city council approval of the requested special event permit as outlined in the application. Thank you.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Charks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven North Matty Utility Extension with Doug and Heidi Gerkey. Mr. Trader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, bids for this project were open on August fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four. Um, and what this project is, is extending, uh, water and sewer utilities north on Matty, um, to what would approximately be future, uh, Third Avenue. Um, the bid, or the low bid was by Site Works, Inc., from Sioux Falls with a total bid amount of a hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, this agreement specifies the conditions of payment for the completion of the project. Uh, the Gerkeys will be responsible for their portion, which is determined to be sixteen point seven percent. And this was determined based off of the ratio of the area of their lot and the area that this project, uh, could serve on future, uh, Third Avenue. Um, so the city share would be approximately a hundred twenty thousand, five hundred and six dollars and thirty cents, with Gerkey's share being twenty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety, ninety-six cents. Uh, the full agreement has been attached for your information. Uh, the final, uh, cost share will be based off of final quantities, um, at the cost share as shown. And staff does recommend council approval and authorize the mayor to sign on their behalf. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCartell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Any further discussion?
Joe, one quick question. How come, uh, eight-inch pipe, the engineer's estimate's like one fifty and he's only at eighty-five?
This bed was very good.
It's competitive. They're all competitive beds. Most, but there's one way out there, but.
Um, we did do, um, some due diligence phone calls and we've, nothing bad, so they want to get started within like the next, as soon as paperwork can be signed, as fast as they can get bonds, they want to start. So it's some, maybe it's something where it fit in their schedule really good.
Joe, quick question. Uh, future development on Third, potentially, uh, that people developing there, would, would they share in this initial cost?
That would be a negotiation piece that we would have to work through with them and council. But my, my expectation would be is that they would share in some, you know, if they had a, Stephanie, can correct me if I'm wrong, would say that if they came in with a TIF, those, uh, expenses would be reimbursable through the TIF.
Okay, further discussion? We have, uh, a motion and a second. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Action to award the bid for North Matty Utility Extension Project twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four. Mr. Trader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, like I just said, uh, the bids were open on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, with Site Works, Inc. being the low bid. Um, I have the, uh, bid tabulation attached for your information. Um, they are under the engineer's estimate and staff recommends awarding the bid to Site Works, um, at one hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty dol- seven hundred thirty dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Moved to approve Site Works.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mrs. Charks. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty dash, or A twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine Civil Engineering Service for CGM Consulting for Sam Street Extension with SPN and Associates. Mr. Trader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, just a clarification, CGM Consulting should be, uh, Maui Farms, Inc.
Okay.
Um, so SPN was contacted, uh, requested, uh, by the city to complete a special assessment role for future Sam Street. Um, the city will complete an assessment for the extension of that, of that project, which will include, uh, asphalt surfacing, grading and miscellaneous, um, stormwater improvements. Um, SPN will provide the assessment role, cost breakout spreadsheet and appropriate professional engineering support for the project. Um, staff does recommend approval of the agreement and estimated amount of five thousand, uh, for the services identified in the agreement.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
I'm not real thrilled with the name, but I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith? I'm not sure what name you were looking for. Okay.
Same.
Oh.
No offense. This is it. Bring a helmet.
Next one's going to be Jeff Street. Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing an action to approve resolution R twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine Leving Business Improvement District Number Three Special Assessments for two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five.
This is the seventh year of the bid number three special assessments. Uh, the amounts are levy based on the property valuation of each of the Main Street businesses. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you. Otherwise, nothing has changed other than the assessment amounts from any of the previous years. Otherwise, nothing has changed other than the assessment amounts from any of the previous years.
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Goldhammer. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Alright, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing on the state revolving fund, SRF loan funding, the Lake Mitchell Project as approved in the June 2024 election. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. With that, we will start the public hearing for the SRF Lake Mitchell Project that was as approved in the June 2024 election. The City of Mitchell is seeking up to $16,815,900 of funding from the Board of Water and Natural Resources to undertake actions designed to improve the water quality in Lake Mitchell. The funds could be either a grant from the state Consolidated Water Facilities Construction Program or a loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. The expected clean water SRF loan terms are 3.75% for 30 years. The Board of Water and Natural Resource may forgive all or a portion of the loan principal. The amount of funds, source of funds, and terms will be determined by the Board of Water and Natural Resources when the application is presented at a scheduled board meeting. And with that, I will open it up to any public comment.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Public hearing.
After seeing no one come up, we will close the public hearing and move into the resolution.
Okay. Action to approve Lake Mitchell Project Application and Resolution R 2024-57.
Mr. Mayor, Council, as previously stated from the public hearing, this will be a loan, not to exceed $16,815,900. Term will be 30 years at a rate of 3.75%. And staff does recommend approval of the resolution and authorize the mayor to sign. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Moved to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Charks, second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion?
I do have one question. If needed, would there be a possibility that the SRF loan could change the number value? I'm hopeful that these bids come back really competitive too, so we don't have to take out that much money, if possible.
You can always close the loan for less than what you apply for.
Perfect.
Okay, any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing and first reading of ordinance 020-24-07 Rezoning of Lot 1, Extension Lot H6 in Section... Can I just say it? As shown on the agenda? Okay, perfect. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, 4-0 with 3 absent. Notices were sent out to neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. There were no responses from any of the neighbors. Location of this is at the south end of Foster Street, right up next to the interstate, which is a dead-end road. In our comprehensive plan, it has it as open spaces. There's no access any further. In our zoning map, it's highway business. Really, to get to highway business, to be able to get around to that location, you'd probably have to drive about three miles to get to it. So highway business really doesn't make a whole lot of sense there. Applicant would just like to rezonate up to TWC to give them some more options for use of the land there. Answering questions that you have.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Sabers and second by Mr. Goldhammer. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, discussion on potential ordinance to stagger election cycles for council and mayor positions. We talked about this a little bit. Hopefully, we'll make it pretty brief. I didn't expect a three-hour council meeting, but we were just... This is just for discussion. To get into this, you know, we were talking about term limits, and I'm not sure how that went, but we were talking about staggering elections. That was brought up by Mr. Smith. So Justin dug into that, and he's going to announce the findings, and there's no action. We're just going to talk about it, so you guys can think about it going forward.
Yeah, so really, what I'm going to try to do is run through this really quick, so we can hopefully have a really quick executive session. So one of the, as the mayor said, one of the things I was asked to look at was, how can we look at potentially staggering our elections for city council and for the mayor positions so that we're not having mayor and potentially half the council changing over at the same time, which can be disruptive? So while we were doing that, we also looked at some alternatives for possibly altering the length of terms for council and the mayor. Because regardless, staggering it is going to require changing the length of the term for at least one position or at least one term. So we wanted to take a broader look at the issue and see if we wanted to consider changing the length of the terms in general. So we've laid out a couple of different options for you for that. Another thing with our existing three-year terms is for people that are coming on, sometimes it can take a while for them to kind of get up to speed with how government works. And then, you know, they can... By the time that they're doing that, they're about getting to the time where they've got to campaign, and then they've got to be a little bit more cautious about which issues they might want to tackle. So for those reasons, we kind of looked at some alternatives. Stephanie, if you want to go down to the first table. That just lays out our first, our existing election cycle. So we've got half the council one year, and then we've got half the council and the mayor in another year, and then we have an off year. So in 2023, we had the first half of the council. This year, we had the mayor and half the council, and then next year, we'll have an off year. So that's the existing cycle. First option we looked at was just staggering the mayor's term to move that into our off year. And the way that we would accomplish that is when the mayor runs again in 2027. We'd have one four-year term. That would push that next opening out until 2031. And then you'd have half council, half council, mayor, and then just repeat the cycle without an off year. So that solves potentially one-year problems, where you're not having all of that massive turnover during one year potentially. But it doesn't necessarily address the issues where you've got shorter terms for all of those elected officials. And maybe that makes it more difficult for them to accomplish longer-term goals during those terms. Moving on to the next alternative, I mapped out if we were to move everybody to four-year terms, how could we do that? And the way that we could do that would be by starting in 2026. Get my bearings here. So 2026, you'd have half of the council move to a four-year term. In 2027, you'd have the other half of the council move to a four-year term. And then in 2027, you'd have the mayor do a two-year term and then start four-year terms in 2029. And then this would, again, leave you with an off year, which that would start in 2028. So with this one, you'd still end up with that off year, which depending on how you want to look at it, an off year is not necessarily a bad thing. The reason that it's come up in discussion recently is we're looking at potentially some valid issues that may be coming in the near future regarding to, you know, some of those other lake lots that might be getting undesignated as parkland. And the situation is now, we've got an off year next year, so we don't have an election to schedule those for, which, you know, you can call a special election if you need to. But in the other scenarios, you've got, you've got an election anyway. So this, this way, you're going to have the cost savings potentially without having to call a special election, so... And then the third alternative was going to be to moving to five-year cycles for all of the elected officials. The thing that's unique about this one is that you're only really having two people turn over at a time, so you've got a lot of long-term consistency for the board. And I won't go through how you get it staggered there, but that's how you do it.
And Justin, you might want to just relate to everyone what the state law says for terms of office, which is how we got there.
The reason I'm having to do all these weird cycles is because you've got... The state law requires that you have cycle terms between two years and five years. So we can't go, can't do a one-year term, and we can't do six or more. So in order, in order to get them staggered, we've got to follow, you know, kind of these weird interim terms. So... No, go ahead. We'll move on to the last slide there. Again, like I said, that one's a little bit unique. This one, you do end up having an election every year. You don't have the off year. You only have two people turning over at a time, so you've got a lot of long-term consistency. You know, I, I don't know whether it's a plus or minus to people for the terms to be that long. I could see that going either way, you know? If you've got people with longer terms, they might not be running for reelection as often. You know, you never know, so I, I don't know. So those are the alternatives that we looked at. Really, what I'm looking for from council is just kind of some direction on which alternative you want me to put into writing and bring back for first reading next meeting.
Or nothing. Just wanted to make that clear.
Or nothing. So this is just what we looked at. You know, obviously, the first alternative with just moving the mayor into the off year is the smallest change from what we're doing now. But, you know, it's up to the council to decide which, if any, of these we want to pursue.
And if you would like to consider it again but want more time, it doesn't have to come back right at the next meeting. You can take another meeting if you need.
Yep, yep. So, and I'm not saying you've got to give me direction tonight. If you want to follow up with me by email, I mean, I'm with you. We've all been here for a long time. But if there's anybody that had comments, I'll take those now, or you can follow up with me, and, you know, we'll, we'll bring this back once we've got direction.
You know, we kind of lost our audience, too. It'd be kind of nice to have at least a few people here to get their perspective. So I think these are all great. We got two left, I guess, but...
Yeah.
But if, you know, the, the thing is, is, you know, this is a pretty major change because we've been this way for years and years and years. So I think you've laid out some very good options. I really do. But I'd like to give it some thought, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, that's why we kind of had it just a night for discussion and whatever. I mean, you, you brought it up.
Because next, because next year, we don't, like you said, we don't have an off... We do have an off year, so we can at least kind of think about it and then, and then see what... Get people's perspectives and see what they think. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah, the one interesting thing, we were talking about selling those lake lots. Something does go to petition, like they wouldn't be able to vote on it until 2026. Unless you had a special election.
But the point on that is, whether you have an election every year or whether you have a special, have a special election on an off year when you need it, the cost is the same.
Right.
It's just that when you don't have a need for a special election, you're not paying the cost. So you shouldn't look at having a special election as a negative or a deterrent.
And most towns are sized... Are they, most towns are sized three years?
They do act... From what I was seeing, they do vary quite a bit between three and five.
Actually, the Mitchell mayor used to be two, two years, all the year 2000. Here, it used to be only two years until 2000, then during Al Sklaga, it switched to three years in 2000. I just found that out today.
I'd say three and four are probably most common, but there were some with five, and I, I think there might have been some with two that I saw.
I was thinking for the larger communities, I thought there was more that had four. But we could survey that as part of the information, if you'd like to see what other first-class municipalities are doing.
Just for discussion, so if you guys want to discuss this later, we can move on to the next one. Alright, motion to enter into executive session according to SDCL 125-2 for negotiations.
So moved.
And legal.
Yeah, we also need...
And legal.
And legal. Oh, I wrote it, but I didn't say it. And legal. We have a motion. We have a second? Second? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Alright, in the executive session.